So, we're still, we still want to go on April twenty-third, right? You gotta figure that out. How did you figure out April twenty-third? Well, that's where we're going to get together.
Well, I think that the regular minutes were okay. That was something that got me. Yeah, the regular minutes are okay, it's the, in the non-teen, um, public ones, you already have. It's twenty-five.
Okay, so.
You have them, yeah.
We're going to twenty-third and, and maybe April and June, we're going. And all of them.
Yep. I think we'll mostly approve the regular minutes for April twenty-third and fourth, not October. From the letter, section one and two, if you can see.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm mostly approving the second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public input? Come on, sir. Alright.
I, I'm sorry, I know I shouldn't have made a point. Um, I noticed that, I'm Jane Kennedy, two ten Sawyer's Crossing Road. I noticed that the white line had been put in at the end of Matthew's Road, you know, as it comes to Sawyer's Crossing. I was hoping that at the same time, they would find a reflective stop sign to put that up at the same time. And I wondered if there had been any decision, any movement, any idea if that was going to occur.
Joe Russo had planned to be in our meeting tonight.
Sorry?
I said Joe Russo, DPW director, has planned.
Yes.
The DPW director has planned to be here tonight, but he had some other, uh, another conflict, so we can check with him, but it's a state road, so I understand he was, had planned for the state.
He had planned for the state, because I talked to Mr. Mr. and he, he was talking about, he'd be coming by, whatever, so I was surprised at the time, and I would do anything, yeah, okay. I, I did talk to him, but I didn't quite get any distinct idea that they, they, they might ask, you know. Is alright.
If, if Joe's able to help you, I know he will.
Okay.
But, he's just not able to.
I don't have to allow people work with us, I still do.
Well, you wanna keep your defense.
I, I guess, yeah, I like to keep my options.
Yes.
Okay, hey, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jane. Jane.
Okay.
Anybody else want a public input? Okay, then we'll get to our first appointment. Stefan Mayhew, assistant planner, welcome. Gloria, it's fine. Not up here, it's beautiful.
So, first thing would be the intent. Permission to submit an intent for land and water conservation fund, which grant for round thirty-six. I think we should apply to five hundred thousand this match, because, and for Brown and Whitefield, it's already a land and water conservation fund designated property, so it should be a little bit easier to obtain the funds and not as many people are applying, so.
So, how, how do you anticipate the flexibility of yours?
Uh, so, this will just be for phase one, which would include softball field, coach shack, slash restrooms, and garage. Be somewhere around one point six million.
How much did you just add?
Yeah.
Say it again, I think one point six million.
Rough. And that's phase one. And, and what would our obligation be if we received the grant?
Five hundred thousand.
No, what, would the town's?
Five hundred thousand.
So, where's the other six hundred come from?
Other grant funds.
So, the safer grant would be five hundred thousand. The town contribution. Did I, maybe I misunderstood you at the beginning.
So, this is for the land and water conservation, it's not just from state parks?
Oh. This is different.
Yeah, this is to redevelop Brown.
And I apologize, but I, can we just go back to those numbers, if you just said, how much is the grant? How much is the grant, how much would the obligation to town?
So, it's a fifty-fifty match.
A fifty-fifty?
Yeah, so we would have to match five hundred thousand, so there are five hundred thousand.
Okay, get a mail.
It's one point six.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to secure more grants.
Yeah, but this is a stop, this thing.
Yeah, this is a filter. How much would be there? I just don't want the third.
What's the, what's the timing? If we were successful, when would, when would we, when would we have to match it?
Spring of twenty-seven.
Spring of twenty-seven. When, when would we, we be notified that we've received the grant?
Either late twenty-twenty-six or early twenty-seven.
So, we need to be in time for the warrant for twenty-seven. And at the same time, we'd be seeking other grants to make up the, the difference.
Make up the whole thing.
With, so phase one, what, what, how many phases are there, and what's the total cost?
It would likely be three phases. The cost that was estimated, I think it was early twenty-twenty-four, early twenty-twenty-three, it was like four point seven. But, they were estimating for us starting in like twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine. But, it'll probably be easier to secure the funds now, because not as many people are applying. Like, the available monies from the last round weren't all used up, and that was a bigger surprise, so. I think there was only three applicants.
So, once we secure the funds, how long do we have before we, how long do we have to execute the, the grant?
Well, it's five years.
So, if we received it in twenty-seven, we would have to thirty, thirty-one, something like that.
Correct. And I can also.
Not to, but the funding, just should get down.
Yeah.
Both. Both.
Both, yeah.
Both.
And, and you, there's other funds that you feel appropriate that would help us with the balance of six hundred? So, how do we get from one point six to five? How, how do we project?
Just five, five, one.
But essentially, we'd be looking at a, potentially, we'd be looking at a three percent match on the part of the town. So, if it turns out to be a five million dollar project, we're basically looking for the town to contribute two and a half million, just in round numbers.
Oh, so. This is, this is kind of a bracket, it's really viable, so we could probably go five million again, from the four projects. We, because in order to use it, we have to contribute five million ourselves, so.
All I'm getting at, is that we're basically looking at a, a, another part of the town of two and a half million in round numbers, to, to get the project finished, if it's a five million dollar project.
Yes, but for the matching funds, you can use other grants. You can use, not necessarily tax credit.
So, we can use grants?
No, the others, yeah.
You're gonna have your work cut out, you're just, I know. Otherwise, it's coming out of your paycheck.
First, can I answer question, so, phase one, right? That one point six, you gotta finish those things you talked about. So, say we're, we can't get funding, we're good with phase one, we can keep running the playground, or even run, and we can prolong phase two, right? Could be, or, or is this all have to go in order together, is what I'm trying to say?
So. Brown would definitely be closer to you.
It would be closer to you.
Actually, because I know that one of the softball fields is probably gonna take at least three months.
Right.
And if we're starting, say we start in like late March, or in April, it's gonna be close for the summer.
What were some of the things you mentioned phase one would do? There'd be the concessions stand, you said, what else?
Oh, but that one. The softball field.
And a softball field, okay. So, phase one's, if they chomped it?
Exactly. And likewise, the estimate is.
Not like a construction line, it's definitely different.
Estimate is exactly, because we haven't had an engineer in the building, we've only had, um, like a, I guess technically, the yard picture.
It seems to me that if, if this is a project, that we wanna move forward, but we wanna move forward with the project, and, and do it as expeditiously as, as possible. So, are we looking at a, if it's a three-phase project, are we looking at a three-year project, or can some of the phases be done at the same time?
It all comes down to, don't.
No, I understand, but we, we've got to.
Say we had the funding, could this be done in a year and a half? Because I think what Bill's trying to get to, could this all be consolidated into one big thing? If we got all the funding together?
Exactly, yeah, I guess so.
So, you would, you would need three years in order to get the safer grant, if we maxed it out at five hundred?
The safer grant is, we would.
He's talking.
Just to save that on the big one, you know? And the deadline for that grant, in fact, says, I, I wanted to apply for it. I applied, but there was just too much.
Okay, take that on the next.
Yeah, yeah.
This was for the water conservation, right?
So, this one is the, so, play, this is the letter of intent, and then the separate, separate subject, it's a safer grant.
So, in the letter of the town, is that right?
The letter of intent.
This is the letter of intent for the land and water conservation?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, a safer grant is the difference.
Oh.
Land and water grant.
So, the letter of intent, that, that could potentially be three letters of intent over the course of three years? So, if we went to, if we had the opportunity to have town meeting, for example, in twenty-seven, we could arguably have a discussion with participants, so they'd understand the full scope of the project, and we, we could potentially secure money for twenty-seven, that we would hold off on until twenty-eight to, to consolidate, or to bring those two funds together, or those two grants together. It would give you time, so we could potentially be looking at a, at a million dollars plus a million dollar contribution from the town for construction in twenty-eight, to be successful.
It also depends on all the contractors and the prices of materials.
No, I understand, right, but see, what, what really what I'm trying to get to is, could we potentially consolidate these into one, one project?
I believe so.
So, that we know, so that we don't start, and then have to take a gap of a few years while we secure additional funding? If we've got five years to spend it, could we potentially get three years worth of it, and then do the project?
The only uncertainty there is, I forget the, um, how often they offer the grant. I'm not positive that it's every single year. It might be like every other year, you know? So, that is one thing I would.
So, if we went ahead with this, worst cases, we get it, don't do anything with it?
Yeah.
And there's no, is there a commitment? This is just the letter of intent, right, there's.
So, that's not, no, it's just a letter of intent. Because we're not applying to the grant, we're just putting a letter of intent, you know?
Which would have to be approved.
And then, once we secure it, are there any, and the project's completed, are there any restrictions that the grant?
Absolutely. It's not applying.
That's why.
It's not applying.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's, it's the same restrictions that are already in the property. So, the only thing we would have to concern ourselves with is remaining within the scope of the project.
And what do you mean by that?
Whatever we put on paper that we say we're gonna do, we have to do it.
So, if you wanna put up a basketball hoop afterwards, we could be told we have to take it down?
Oh, afterwards? Uh, we shut off the savers, but, you know.
Is it the same thing that what happened in Colby Park, where we have to take the, the hoop down?
Is Colby Park, A A Park, it's, it is. It's the same grant. Same, same grant.
So, that, that reduces our flexibility to, to modify the plan afterwards, or is it, or do you think they'd leave us alone once everything is signed off on?
You know, always in purpose, you may, you may. That was kind of a different situation, if it, uh, we didn't follow the scope of all that, and so that's why things had to change. So, I'm really hoping that this project, whatever scope is outlined, let's say that's the scope that we followed to it. And there, I think there are understanding of like, during the project, we need to change things. Change things, and that's just a change of scope, and that's.
Is it a change of concept, or just a, a reline based on existing and.
Restoring.
So, we, we couldn't, we couldn't remove, like a pickup home court, for example, if we decided we didn't wanna do it, that would be.
So.
So, if it wasn't on there, could we add it?
I believe so. Yeah.
So, there is some flexibility.
Yeah.
So, what are the restrictions?
I, I would have to, do you want me to pull it out?
So, I guess what really is just, it, it seems absurd that we have to pull that basketball hoop down at the other park. So, it is, what's, are we gonna run into those types of situations?
We shouldn't, if we do what we're saying we're gonna do. Like, exactly what we say we're gonna do. And if we are changing, we just, we need to let them know, but we also need to provide ourselves time to make that change. Because that's what happens every time, we have to provide ourselves time to make that change.
Which is it? Seems like the right thing to do. Alright. Anybody else, anybody have any questions? Need a motion? Or just consensus? Alright, Mark, Jim?
Yeah.
Alright. Now, let's go on to number two of your three items agenda.
The heat pump, that's right, free next door. Um, the trustees of the library, one, two, have installed. Um, I looked at the meds from last year, it was actually a member, not many, I apologize about.
I don't know if it was a cold lot, if it was a cold lot over.
It was.
I think that was a short one.
I don't know, but I looked into it, the library has a fund for it. I think it's go ahead, um, I don't know if you guys have took a real.
Didn't we already?
That's what I thought, I worked, but I don't see it.
Alright, so you want a motion to, to approve the install of?
I wonder if that happened because we walked over there, and we come back, and we didn't actually put it down? So, I remember, I think that's what happened. Because I remember we did.
We made a.
At the library? Yes. I remember the slide, doing that. It was early in the height of select no career.
Possibly, it was the latter part of your first year.
Yes, but I do remember this, and I think that's what happened. Because I remember it was all going agreeable, we were all agreeable, so doing what we were gonna do. Right, because we went over there, you were with, I'm pretty sure, I think we went outside, we checked the side, we talked about this. You know, the game, the, the batteries, and the whole thing.
Alright, so you need a motion?
Just have some.
I'm sorry?
Just to have some.
Alright, do we have that? So, is it, is it up, where the, where's the money coming from? Is it, is it within their budget? I know CIP.
CIP.
Um, I mean, CIP, so. Bill blew it, did a walkthrough, and after the walkthrough, we provided a book, he quoted it at eleven thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars. So, that twelve thousand should be enough, because that includes the, uh, labor installation and all that. So, that twelve thousand should be enough, but I'm pretty sure funds to ask library has like only four thousand dollars, so.
So, do you, do you want a, a motion to authorize the issuing of RFP? Or do you want it to be restricted to twelve thousand dollars, or do you want to?
I, I think RFP is a good idea, because I know there are interesting parties doing installation. I just wanted to go, bear it over to whatever contractor wants to get it all.
So, we, you would look for a motion from us to issue a RFP for the installation? That's the order on it, mini split?
Of a thirty-six thousand BTU, uh, air source heat pump, that's right, for the library.
Okay, and then, once you, once you select the, the winning candidate, you would come back, and then we would authorize up to whatever that amount is? So, it'll be a two-step process?
Is it you guys that authorize the funds, or are we the one who corrects, is that authorized?
It's, it's coming out of CIP, but it's.
Backing up a little bit, a little confused with the word you're using, heat pump. I thought this was a mini, I thought it was a.
It was the second.
Is it the air conditioner again? That's what we discussed, the air conditioner again.
It is the type, you can be sorry.
The air conditioner again?
Right, I have to say that.
Okay, so I just, I never heard you call that, that's all. I just wanted to clarify that, so, what?
Immediately.
Oh, I trust him, I just, I personally never, I wanna make sure that I, I'm voting on the right thing there.
So, we can work that other piece out later, but for now, you need authorization to go through the RFP.
Exactly.
Does it need to be that specific on the BTUs?
No, we think that it's maybe cases, the contract, you know, like field development.
That's right, you said we don't need thirty-six thousand. It's a quick way to get it. It's a RFP for mini split?
Yeah, what's the term you're gonna use? Air source heat pump, air source.
They kind of motion, are they motioning for RFP for air?
So, it's heat pump?
Air source heat pump.
That's right.
For the strike. Second.
Any further discussion?
I'm not only sitting here.
All in favor?
Aye.
When would you issue that?
I don't know, that's responsible.
Entirely the winter?
Time is so very possible.
Well, it's gonna take you, Mike, how, how long do you think you're gonna put it out there for? Plus, you gotta, you gotta find a time, it's not an easy project to do.
I mean, if it's, it's out there for like three weeks, but, or maybe that's a little long, two weeks. Should have my rights for that.
Alright, you've got some contacts, who has some contacts that you can share with you, and make sure against those contractors. We have local contractors, we'll give it out to. Great.
Sure.
All that's right.
Do you want, do you have an update on that?
I do have an update on that. We're not applying for this round. I found it like a week before this, too, and I was like, yeah, I, I have a plan.
I'm gonna catch that down.
So, we're gonna post it, we're gonna, I'm like, I'm like. Yeah, I was.
But why are you asking? Can you, can you, can you give me a, a briefing? I, I'm, I think I'm understanding this right, it's like a grant that would, would allow us as a town to run an employee, and they'll cover the employee costs for so many years, is that, is that what this grant is?
No, from what I understand.
Okay, what is it?
It's for fire response equipment, it's actually.
Oh, for only equipment, it isn't for an employee?
I believe it's just for equipment. I'm not super familiar with the grant, um.
My understanding was it was for like an employee guy.
Well, safer is for staffing, for adequate fires.
Staffing, that's what I looked at when I was.
We did do that a few years ago, although it's changed.
Yeah.
Eric said he couldn't be entrusted, um.
It was exciting to me when I saw it, I was a little, bummed when I went on to learn about it, and like, sorry. But we missed the vote on it, is that what it is? We, we were like.
We didn't apply for this round, I was just trying to be like a little candid, and try and like, um, have some resources for the new cars, you know?
Yeah.
But, I don't, the grant is going to where, you know, in terms of, so, I'm sorry.
Can Eric help you with that? When would the next one be?
I have to find out if it is every two year, or regular.
So, it's nothing? Looking beyond the radar?
Well, I agree. I think that's what it is.
Anything else? Have you got mask on your radar?
I do indeed, um, I spoke with Joe, um, he said that the, you know, we submitted two applications last year, both got approved, and we just had to, we came up. So, I say we just go for the extension of the softball towards Calhoun, because he said there's really a lot of projects that are uh, more pressing than that, you know?
So, what, what, did he explain to you when the crosswalk lights?
I said so. Either they explained it or so.
Well, we're there now.
Okay, so probably so. This is what I'm talking about, right?
Great. Anything else? Anything else? Good job, sir. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Done.
Done.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have the opportunity to review the vacant requests for map one-ten lot eighty, map twenty-two thirty-one point one, I'm sorry, two thirty-two, lot twenty-seven, map one-ten lot fifty-two, map two-zero-nine lot thirteen, map one-zero-six lot fourteen, and map two, two-seventeen lot twenty-one. We are all agreeing with the assessors' recommendations, do we have a motion to approve those?
And we're to accept the recommendation from Arizona Assessing Services for the farm. Given applications for twenty twenty-five, map one-ten lot eighty, map two-thirty-two lot twenty-seven, map one-ten lot fifty-two, map two-zero-nine lot thirteen, map one-zero-six lot fourteen, and map two-seventeen lot twenty-four.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Gloria, you wanna give us an update on the RD PPG funds?
I sure can. Sorry, I spoke briefly with Ben Tyler, um.
Could you refresh the board on what this is for?
Yeah.
Yes, the, the RD is for the world development, this is the PPG support. This is for the, the water.
It's the water.
The water study.
It's continuing the water.
Well, part of the water study, um.
The Westwondi water study that, that we started last year, and this is a continuation of it.
Um, this is a grant to pay, um, for that, so. The, uh, Ben, there was a change in the, he said the last item, they were confirming on this email chain that, uh, we had sent needless, the contract value of the primary engineering for, and the environmental review. Um, so they are requesting, um, that the engineering fee be increased to twenty-six hundred, five hundred and six hundred, for a total of thirty-six thousand four hundred, to cover some additional, um, world development coordination, as well as the adjustment for current rates.
And the, and the grant itself is twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, the grant is twenty-five thousand, and our portion would be, um, eleven-six.
So, what we had originally approved, when we applied for this, is nine thousand? And because of the delay in, in getting through the process, the, the costs have increased?
Yeah.
So, we, we need to increase from our expenditure from nine thousand to eleven thousand six?
Correct. Still, did you, did you get any information on that? Yeah, okay, we were gonna check with Teresa, um, on what was in there, but we didn't get a chance to do that, so.
Do we, do we know where the funds will be coming from?
That's what we were gonna be checking on, because I'm, I'm not sure of that, but we didn't get a chance to speak with Teresa about that.
Should we hold off until July?
Motion to pay that, approve the twenty-six hundred dollars in.
Would be a total of eleven-six, we need to know where it's coming from.
Oh, that would be, we already approved the man, it's, we just have to put the two point six, two thousand six hundred, and it could go eleven-six.
Yeah, we're saying the same, uh, but yes, we, we just need to know where it's coming from.
Uh.
Do you wanna wait till July nine? Alright, we'll take a look. All right, we'll take the look till July, July nine. Uh, you, now you sent us a nice proposal from revised with regard to the website and redesign?
Uh, yes, so I think Christine, actually, the former admin had been working on it, it was in, um, October, so Christine, um, Smith has taken that over, her IT, um, rep, and she has done a great job working with Dylan and Rapparize, which is the company that we have now, that, that post, I would say. Um, and they are basically proposing, uh, no, there'll be no upfront costs, um, and it's the same rate as what we're paying now, just twenty-five hundred annually. Um, and in the proposal there, um, it kind of gives a timeline of, you know, it's gonna take a couple months to get it going. Yeah, the design, you know, basically Christine and I, and Mick Stipon can help us, uh, you know, I think the more eyes we have on it, the better, just to make it more easier funding for the residents and also for the staff, um, so, on that, um. I think the whole thing would give a go of six months to go, by the time comes, you know, we start to go live with the new site, um.
And then they would quarterly update it?
Yeah, so one good thing too was that, um, we get a free upgrade in five years, because most companies will charge you, um, like, second plus, they just recently, um, like the Drupal seven or whatever, they have these different, um, you know, upgrades or whatever, if you don't upgrade your app and pay ten thousand dollars for the upgrade, you're gonna be stuck in this platform, it's not, the employees embrace. So basically after five years, um, they give a free upgrade, so we don't have to pay for any upgrade charges, um, like that. Uh, they also.
Was there a review of some of the optional opportunities that they offer?
Like some of the modules?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, which we were interested in, um, we don't have to, we can always add these in, we figured we'll just stick with the base, what we have now, so there's no, um, increased cost. But there was a module that, um, would be good for the building department and go enforcement, just to be able to go on there and, um, people could schedule appointments, um, sort of, it's a little bit of a backlog in there, um, but it would be easier for the people to go on, you could put some, you know, times available for inspections, and the people can go on there and schedule that, so there are different modules, um, that was one that we were, would be interested in. They have like the chap lot and all this other place, secretist things that we're not really interested in, but it's a lot of money too for those, um, it would be nice to have, but obviously it's, it comes with a, with a fee.
I, I think that code one, code for him, he showed me an example of it, and I think that we really need that.
We really hope that.
I think it's worth the money, uh, he's familiar with it too, and it is gonna make it easy, so we have, it's much.
It would be helpful, I think, for, you know, the, the building or whatever, just be able to go online or whatever, just not ability to open to calling and doing things.
He said he can come in in the morning, check it all, and see where he's at.
Yep.
Schedule things out, they can do it, it's free there.
So with, with our change in security in town hall, is that a program that can be expanded? In other words, can it go to the planning departments, can, can you utilize it?
Oh, yeah, 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 it'll be basically, I was saying, um, working, uh, last week, I should be, um, made Adam, the admin on there, uh, and myself, I haven't logged in yet, but, so, it'll be, I think we can have four admins that can log on and make updates, so.
I'm sorry, the schedule, will there be an opportunity for other departments to use the scheduling module?
Sure, yeah, because I think it would be one module, it would be, no, it wouldn't be just specific to one number.
So everybody could sync their, their calendars into that, into that database or module, whichever. And, and so if I, if I wanted to make an appointment to see Adam, I could just go into his calendar and plug it in the same way as with Chris?
Oh, to the point, um. I'm not sure if I have the.
Unless they're dances now.
Yeah.
Is there a way that you could talk to them about, or could you talk to them about expanding it?
Yeah.
Is it, I think it's gonna be very important, with the security features that we have in place, that people have an opportunity to, to make those appointments.
So I think the way to the problem is, you know, if you're the loading person, or the command person, you need to put times when you'd be able to outside of the premises. If they're making yours, it's kind of a turn appointment, um, and I would, you would see their calendar, you just be able to pick a spot, it would fall apart.
Then I came across one, I'm, I'm actually asking what you're, that you're pointing out. Appreciate that.
So Lori, I know that Kevin Burrow from Hawker, you know, first time to, uh, whether it's his line, or if they designate, I, I would put one on to that as well.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Yeah, we have the local, local forums, which is kind of nice to, just, um, you could have like build your applications or building permits, um, like already built right on the website instead of all building PDFs. And having to, you know, actually create everything like that, I mean, that's another, like, just that, that would be twenty-nine fifty, um, and then annually it's a fee per dollar. So anything to do is gonna be added on at twenty-five hundred, but there are options there, um, which we obviously wanna look at in the next budget season.
Yeah, so you all could review that and then put that in for, for next year.
Yeah, and right now, I, I think we just stick with the flat twenty-five hundred and, um, adjust the, the increase one for the inspections or, um, audits in twenty-two six, but they.
Would be great if you expedite that to, you know, if you have something extra, to at least get Chris on board, because he's got something he's talked about now for four or five months.
Yep.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. Cemetery perpetual care policy?
Do you, do you want, will you do any motions?
Or you want a motion, we, we, we're not, there's no revenue. It's just, do the RFP, um, yeah.
Well, I think if we, yeah, I guess we want our costs, I think, okay.
It's up to you, though, I think, it's.
No, I just, well, if you're going to sign, that's it, you don't have to, I put it all on.
But is there gonna be a new contract, we like start over, even though it's the same money up top?
Yeah.
So, you think, you said a motion that you should forward on a new contract?
Yeah, but he'll, he'll get it and I can bring it to you when I have, this is what we're gonna choose, and Ben will sign on. This is basically just to get us in the door so we can start working on it, because they're getting away with their busy time, so we wanna make sure we're all there.
Any consensus? Cemetery perpetual care policy? Was that something that Cordell had heard about?
Yes, thank you for that, it's actually. Right there. I'm not gonna do that, I'm gonna communicate somewhere, but maybe at the same time.
You wanna just read it?
Yeah, oh, sure.
Just, you're, you're, if you know, and you remember what this is about, and Steve Bill, or?
I'm still a little, uh, aware, it's actually a way of, what comes up there in one, material, because it's a bunch of law, and I'm just saying, right?
That's probably.
It's a ten thousand, within five thousand, and.
No, no, that's, 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 this is about the cemetery, the meeting with.
Or they're not on their end there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, the policy will state, the board of selectmen acting as the board of cemetery trustees adopts the following policy regarding cemetery perpetual care trusts. Effective as of January first, twenty twenty-five, the town of Swansea will not exempt donations for the creation of new cemetery perpetual care trusts. The town will continue to pay for the maintenance of all cemetery plots with general, from general, all foundations for the creation of new perpetual care trusts received on or after January first, twenty twenty-five will be returned to the donors.
Anybody have any questions on that, something you may have been there, was this, up until the nineteen-sixties, people did, uh, they contributed towards a fund for their beloved ones, uh, for care for the, for their cemetery plot, but in the nineteen-sixties, the town took that over, and since then, some people have been continuing to donate to the, to the fund, uh, as, as small as five or ten dollars, maybe as large as a hundred dollars, and the, the challenge was, it was costing us more money to administer those funds than the funds themselves, so we're essentially going away with that.
Is there a background for the trustees?
You can speak to it, whether or not I do.
Any other questions that some people have, I don't think I can, you know, just add action.
Make a motion to leave a separate policy on cemetery perpetual care trust. As of January first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay. Funding for the town hall renovations in Penney?
I know we already did that one, uh, but we have to, we're just knocking around, we think we have to have fun.
Allocated funds from, from funds that didn't have the necessary balance, so we're readjusting.
Yes, so we are going to rescind the vote that we took, that we took a couple weeks ago, um, and we are going to be taking twenty thousand, um, town, the, town, for the town hall painting, and ninety-five hundred seventy-three dollars for the security door, for the funds to come from, invest in each.
Any discussion?
We move to rescind the vote authorizing funds from the town hall maintenance, and to further authorize twenty thousand dollars for any town hall, nine thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars for the security door, and to down all the funds to come from investment.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Town hall looks pretty good now, the painting came out, came out nicely.
So we should, so we should play this fire, or the fire.
Okay. Would you like to delve into the carpenter on repairs, I don't mind holding off on that.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, I know we had, um, Joe did some, or the subject, you know, subject pump, but that, he should go just come right out of our budget, right?
Yes.
So we can find, I know he did a little bit of like more work too, um, but I'm pretty sure that's coming from the budget, and you know, things are, both have, I think, now, so.
Okay.
I think we should be, should be all set with the work that's been done there so far, and I know there are some needs that, um, we'll have to address in the future, but we'll figure out where that means.
Okay. All right, and, uh. All right, so, um, with regard to the request, uh, by Jay Ward, that we reach out to Fisher Gane, could you let us know where we are with that?
Yeah, so I.
Does this have to do with Wilson Pond issues with regard to the use of the vote launch?
Um, yes, I did actually speak with Jay the next day, he came in and talked about a different, something else, um, but I did, um, tell, tell him whatever we reach out to, we can find out who was responsible, can enforce the signage and stuff down there. I didn't get a chance to speak with the Jay Ward contact, Fisher Gane, um, or even to look if we had a town ordinance on that, because Mark, maybe he would know, if, if it was a town ordinance, I believe.
I guess we remember the signs going up, I don't know if it was actually the town ordinance, the sign went up for.
Right.
Take up your garden, no dogs.
No, sorry.
I think all of that is on there.
Um, and we did also speak with, with Chris, um, at that time, and I think Chris told him to reach out to Fisher Gane, so I, I need to do a bit more research and find out whether we have any ordinance, um, and if so, maybe we need ten thousand, but we need to be taking a drive down there, you know, occasionally.
So we're trying to figure out who has enforced it, like.
Well, yeah, I'm estimating it would be the town, because they don't make the state, but, but the sign up and then, I'm gonna force it, but.
Okay, is that something we can have for July nine? Thank you. Okay. So. Right, we, we had a, an opportunity this weekend, our, our police chief alerted us that with the heat alert, that we should be prepared as a, as a community, and, and we did, Lori and, and Kevin Westcott, we put a plan together to open Wickham Hall on Monday and Tuesday, and today if needed, we did have water and, and, uh, some snacks available for people. Turned out, we weren't able to staff, so they quickly shifted and, uh, announced that we were moving that to town hall, which, which they did. Uh, and we did have the same refreshments and opportunities available, I don't believe anybody took advantage of it, but you did, good for you. Uh, but, but I think the good news is that we, we did have a police chief, and emergency management director, and town administrator, who were proactive and, and, and took the step to make these, these opportunities available for people, and the expectation is that we'll continue to do that, uh, during winter time situations when it loses power. As independent, no hand shrugs, most people don't take advantage, but we do want people to understand that we're making that opportunity available to the. I'd like to talk with you guys about, uh, having a meeting with Lori and, um, and Kevin, and the, the individual chiefs, and Joe DeRusso, just to review where we're at, and review our policy and procedures, so that we're, we continue to be prepared, we'll, we'll be forward. Would you be open to having a, a special meeting just for that, be open to follow up next week? Lori, any?
Could it be a special meeting?
Just to, yeah, just so we can get everybody together, it's, we, the last time we did, we had a hazard mitigation plan update was two thousand nineteen, and so I served on that, on that committee. Uh, when we did that, the next time is twenty twenty-six, and we'll, we'll be on that committee along with Lori, uh, but in the meantime, we've had three emergency management directors since then, and there's been a little bit of a discount, I, I don't, I don't think, I know I don't know, so I'm just hopeful that we can all get together and, and, uh, just, just make sure everyone's aware, and Kevin in particular, because he was very instrumental along with Lori on Saturday, putting this together, you know, and Burke's back. You guys at time next week?
Yeah, so we have Teresa, Joe, we have Eric, Eric, uh, is Amari?
Yeah.
And Cat.
And the fellow.
And the fellow.
Yeah.
So that makes we have to do it in the evening time, right?
Or you do it just in the afternoon, in the fire station, you could do it late afternoon.
My name is Karen Forrest, we're gonna not listen to that, have a meeting.
You might, uh.
Are you not on next Wednesday?
No.
We have any, we have a, yeah. Does it have to be next week though?
No, I just think we should get together as soon as we can. I think it needs to be a, a special meeting where we can just focus.
Yeah.
With fire, police, and.
What, we'll do it in Burke's. See, having a public makes it a little different, because we could have already the town hall one day, if you wanna go to the public.
Yeah, right downstairs. Yeah, we, we did the, the meeting, uh, with Steve Bill and that, for, for.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Good timing, first.
How long do you have to grow something like that, for twenty-four hours?
Well, only twenty-four hours. But we also have to make sure we're scheduled online.
Yeah, that's right, so you think maybe we should look into it next week, or we'll call the other guys and see what works. So sometimes, okay, maybe, I don't know what this is.
Probably before.
Next week is supposed to. Next week is supposed to be July? You mean next Friday?
Wow.
So we should probably do it before Wednesday.
I'm sorry.
Probably before Wednesday, I don't know if people are getting time off.
We'll do four o'clock on Tuesday. Alright. So we're gonna have a special meeting on Tuesday at four o'clock at the fire station. We do have to get permission from the, the fire chief, uh, to do that. And specifically, it will be a review of our emergency management practices and policies. And have anybody there, you're welcome to attend.
And it's Joe, Eric, Joe.
Old Joe's and Eric.
Kevin.
Kevin. And Nick, if you wanna come?
Yeah. And Eric will probably wanna bring Mike in and.
Nick would probably, it'd be great to have him.
Eric?
Alright. Thank you. Okay. You have anything else? Oh. Um, with regard to the proposal for, for policies for the Lucy Carpenter Trust Fund and helping those in need, and they had a significant number of, of clients. Uh, I, I think that we, we should leave that up to the committee to, which would be.
I think she was just concerned about, um, I, I took basically what was given to me and I just re-formatted it, so all the information that was given to me, I, I put it in that document. Uh, I think she was concerned that it was those two days stipulations on what, um, what the money could be used for, because it was so, um.
Her, her reasons by line?
Oh, okay, yeah. Yes, she, I.
Hi, Jennifer.
I'm, I'm just not sure.
I don't think we'll need to discuss it now, I just think we, we should make it, um, for our responsibility.
I mean, she does hire, I mean, I'm here with, um, Mike Ranley and, um, Cordell. Um, and I know they have a certain, you know, certain requests that these funds could be used for, but I don't, I don't feel comfortable changing anything that that team.
My suggestion is not that we make the change. My suggestion is that the committee itself, which would be Edna, Richard Scarravalli and Mark, re- review this and then whatever suggestions they have can run by you and Cordell and then come to the board. So, have you guys met yet? Can we, can we set up a meeting for that committee to get them started? Do you, do you want to do that?
I can, um, have Edna set that up.
I'll text you.
Not next week, perfect.
I mean, not next week.
Something we might want to get them up and then. This one.
Mark, do you want to kind of tie that?
Well, I'm not here. Troy's gonna give it once.
We could set the.
He's a volunteer, I guess.
How you doing?
Yes.
Something on the following.
Okay, I'll have Edna come in and ask. Perfect.
I can see it. Very good. It's a move.
Yeah, this, I mean, um, if you commented on, uh, any other objectives to deal with, necessarily following, um, do we control type, things like this? And, uh, of course, the party's gonna be coming, uh, to the party, um, for, for discussion. Okay. Next. Alice, I think it's your turn. I think it is, I think we've gone through our agenda. Do you wanna come up and tell us about Honeybee and you've got some members of your board you might wanna introduce?
How many you got, Paul? You can sit at a chair right here, you've got some conflict.
Sure. Um, it's, uh, we're not, we're not using it. We're not setting the clock for that. So the initial part of this discussion will be regarding conceptual and potential plans. And then we'll, we'll have one more shot at public input and then we'll be going into non-public to discuss business plan and items like that. But for now, give us enough data.
My first question is, yeah.
Sure.
Um, I'm Allison, Allison.
Last one.
Allison. Oh, my name's Allison, sorry, for a minute. A, E, C, K.
And I'm Ally Kreutz, Ally is just A L I, Kreutz is K R E U T Z.
Big.
So for those who don't know, Honeybee Hall has been a tenant at the Carpenter Home for almost two years, uh, running a childcare facility. We're coming up for lease renewal. Let's have a conversation.
Okay, um.
We'll need to speak up just a little bit.
Okay, we'll try. Um, so, let's see, uh, we've, I'm just talking about a sec. Um, so we've been, we've been at, uh, the Carpenter since June of two thousand and twenty-two, I think at this point. And, um, we've, we've grown quite a bit, we've had some trials and tribulations, um, through those three years. Um, and another childcare center hasn't quite, uh, experienced either. But, um, we also felt some kind of wonderful experiences with it. We just love the, the location, we love hiking and we thoroughly attended the council library and seen this, uh, like, exploring the grounds, um.
How many, how many kids do we have at this?
So we are, um, we are currently enrolled, which means part-time and full-time. We have, uh, fifty-four children, um, some are school age and.
How much you say fifty-four?
Fifty-four, yes.
That's a combination.
Or not, we just hit that under the last.
You gained nine, says that.
Yes, yes, we, we add to our, which is, has been very nice. Um, but so, yes, we're, we're, and some of them are school age that are, 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 um, we've, trying to think of what we need to touch on.
Give a background on, on the population and practice of the families, like, over there.
So, yes, we've been, um, I'm just trying to, you know, I don't have it in front of you, but yeah. Um, so we have more than, uh, I should say, more than, I think thirty-four of our families. Last time we looked, was, where it's, um, a good chunk of those work, um, go work in Swansea. And, um, we have families that are in Keene that also work. We also employ, you know, we have twelve employees and of those, four are from Swansea, five are from Swansea. Um, so we try to really keep it close to home, um. On air, and, uh, and my husband, who's, uh, I think it's Swansea, I think that. We have a lot of, um, school teachers, actually, that have been, uh, taking advantage of the proximity to, to the school, um, which has been really fun to have the, the connection with the elementary school.
Do you understand this, because the majority of these people are all from Swansea?
The majority, yes.
But ninety percent, they couldn't handle that clearly.
I'm sorry, it was thirty-four out of fifty-four.
Thirty-four to fifty-four residents of Swansea.
Yes.
There's multiple children, um, myself, I have two children that have, have childcare centers. So our family has two children, although we're one Swansea family, so.
Oh, so.
When you break it out, it's the number.
No, I know, I did at least.
It's not fifty-four families, it's fifty-four thirty.
Exactly, it's fifty-four.
Or it could be thirty-five families that support that.
Yeah, Lori, after that, and, and the, the huge percentage of Swansea, I suppose.
Okay.
Um, so, yes, we try to maintain that, um, even when, when a consortium lists, um, if there's, you know, Swansea families that, that, you know, that try to go up, when possible, if there's, if there's an opening, we try to make, collect that information on our waitlist application, um.
Forgive me, you told me recently how many we had on the, the waitlist, was it seven?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three.
I believe our waitlist is at eighty-three currently, um.
Fifty-four is max.
Sixty is our max.
So why, why is there?
So sixty is a max on our license. We've shifted some of the classrooms, um, you know, going into it. In the first years, I knew eventually like rooms would be confusing and, and, uh, struggle to, to work with. Um, so as we, as we've grown, we've shifted, um, the rooms that we utilize on our license. And I don't, I don't quite know how to describe it, but.
Also, there's something, you know, Bill is Vice President of the Board of Trustees and Board of Directors. The issue that's trying to come to that number is if, if you just took out a conceptual drawing and said this building is S one square feet, you could fit S one kids in it with Carpenter Home, no scrannies, uh, basically highway alleys. So if you're, if you're a teacher there and you're responsible for four children, like, an infant room, it's, there, there's some difficulties with the way the building's laid out that we can't maximize completely sixty people. Uh, most childcare facilities don't carry, have a carrying capacity. Most are below the threshold they're licensed for unless they're a room like this with, you know, blankets up. Uh, just you have to have complete eye lining sites of children. So in the example of Carpenter Home, with my son is a preschool room, there's three rooms. So having two teachers, you have to have those rooms. Well, when a child asks for the bathroom, what happens? So there's, you have to have some flow in those. So, yes, it's licensed for sixty, but the reality is that there's an actual real number. And if you look at what we have at fifty-four, the, the, this max alley, it's off the, the teachers, instructors, it's just, if that's, you're on your fifty-four, without jeopardizing, you know, one kid asks for the bathroom, how you cover that, unless, you know, children are sick, everything happens. The, the, the number is definitely tied right there.
So let me understand this, are you saying if you had a bigger room like this, you'd need one teacher versus three? Because it's three separate rooms and you can't visually see each one? So if you took those walls away, now you can fit them all, all together? Is that what I'm understanding?
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, you know, if you have fifteen hundred foot square house, they just see a difference where feet, they don't see that there's, you know, four rooms versus one room, so.
And captain of home rooms divided into smaller rooms.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So, like, as the example of the preschool room, the front room is licensed for nine children. So, um, that main room that they, they eat their snacks in and things like that, that is actually eight-four, includes the space in front of the bathroom. So they've measured the space that's involved with the bathroom. And then that, you know, that adds two kids, so the rooms were just seven. And then there's that little cubby hole that they added in so we could maximize our, our license capacity. Um, and we also, as we've grown, we did, when we first, then we had twenty kids and we started all in one room. And then we got, we, we expanded, um, and we opened the indoor rooms separately. They have the toddler room, um, with the help of Mike Jasmine and the floor, they, with that, removing one of the walls for that room. So, um, that expanded our capacity in the indoor room. And then as the toddler room grew, we've moved the preschools out as it's coming here. Um, the room that the toddlers are at right now is a porch, that they're gonna put porch, which it works. It's just, um, it works for space. It doesn't, it's not working as well as we would like it to, um, or hoped at this point, kind of, that we need the, the kids. And so we've, we've also shortened the room, that room is licensed at twenty-three. And we, we shortened it to include heavy space so that, um, the quickest to have the personal items. And it's also the group size for toddlers is a max of fifteen. So we, we shortened the room to meet the, that group size maximum. So that's a one-to-one ratio, so three teachers in there. Because it is a one-day room, it works well like that, it's just not, it's just open to everyone. Um, just, you know, safety, safety concerns and things, because it's right in the doorway.
So we have, we have a split sort of traffic, of people coming in and getting copies and all that.
So that not everyone's walking through.
Or kids are.
Yes, we can access the kitchen.
And it's kind of remarkable that the center is able to provide care for such a broad age range. Um, there is a shortage of childcare providers, um, in the States. And oftentimes, new parents have the hardest time finding care for their infants. Um, I worked for the town of Yarrow for six years and I was, um, I wore three different hats simultaneously. But, um, I was a human services officer. I would ask, is Edna here, human services? I figured based on that conversation. Um, one of the things that I ran into all the time, um, were families who came seeking assistance, uh, paying their rent because they could not find care for their kids, so they could not work. I also had people who had to leave jobs because the childcare that they were able to scrap together fell apart. Uh, so I, I think that the fact that, you know, Honeybee Hall was providing care to not just toddlers, but to infants, um, is really special. And then there's older school age children there too. Like, there, this is, this is kind of a rare thing to find, especially, um, at affordable rates. And, um, I have, uh, four-year-old twins. And, um, I wish that I lived a little bit closer, um, so that they could go to Honeybee Hall, you know, for their room, um, even for three days a year. Uh, when they were young, um, they were showing out seventeen hundred dollars, um, a month, and that was just for three days. Um, so when Alice asked me to be, um, a part of the board, um, because of what I encountered in my past as the, the welfare officer, because of my own struggles finding care and, um, because of my history with Alice, she provided care for my oldest daughter, who's nine. Um, and so I knew that, but she had to offer something really special. Um, like I, I said, absolutely. And so, uh, we're so pleased to have this opportunity to talk to you and we know that this arrangement with the town, um, I think it's kind of unprecedented that the, the town is essentially, you know, renting a town-owned building to any childcare center. Um, like, I, I was just so thrilled when, um, I heard that that was going to take place. So, um, we do have.
A big thing.
We do have some, some neighbors, we do have some members, but I just wanted to, to thank all of you, um, you know, for allowing us to have this opportunity to be discussing this. Because having worked for a municipality for six years, uh, and, you know, knowing people who are involved in childcare, it's not an industry you get into if you're looking for a lot of worry, a lot of things or a lot of nights. Um, and so I know that that's something that's, uh, you know, you all have in common. And, um, I'm just, I'm so grateful that, um, you know, we've been able to, to make it work even when it works this far. And, uh, yeah, we're looking forward to seeing what other information they can provide forward.
My concern is that, I understand you're building more kids, staff is getting bigger. But I'm concerned with the building that maybe we weren't prepared for the larger staff and the kids. It feels like we brought them in before we prepared, if, if I'm making sense. The walls shouldn't have been taken down. And so now I'm listening to a heavy staff because you'll have to put a heavier staff on because you have to man three different rooms versus you could have one teacher and cut your costs down on your staff. And we could, but, but we're filling it, I get that, I, I, we see the need. Yeah. But we also have to be concerned that how much money has to go into this building? That's a big concern. And this is an old building. And some of these walls could be support walls, where the roof could fall in, if we take the walls down. I, I, I just, I just think we might need to go back, back it up and say, okay, let's prepare. Let me bring the kids in, alright, now we're ready, we got a big room. You know, and that's just one of my concerns, visiting in it and listening to you. Because I think you guys, you know, your hearts are all here, I, I really do. I just think this is being attacked a little, where maybe we're putting the wagon in front of the horse here, you know?
Yeah.
You know, these things should have been ironed out, I think, a long time ago, where these walls are gonna go. We're the growth, when we're gonna have growth, we gotta have, you gotta have this, you know, to have that growth. And I think it would grow, but we don't have what we need to grow. I don't know if that makes sense.
Hundred percent, you want to touch on that real quick, just to kind of tell the whole story, you know, where we are. So, again, June twenty twenty-two, we moved in, uh, had the influence with Mike Jasmine to kind of establish the daycare center. And it was really long of us getting there, get our feet moving and see kind of what works. And the idea was that as we're in here, he could facilitate and, you know, for a large part, us as a board. And the idea was that as we're in here, he could facilitate and, you know, for a large part, us as a board, we didn't exist until May of twenty-three. June of twenty-three is when we established the board, so we'd best become a nonprofit. So we, as a board, have been around for about two years. And the majority of the back and forth that has happened at that time was the core force is going to the town, going to the select board, going to town offices, going to Joe, back and forth. We weren't really improving much on that. A lot of it was, hey, I'm going to take care of this and it'll work out. And, you know, there's no opinions, this is new. So from Alice's perspective, I don't want to speak for her, but there's some difficulty in that because it was, okay, we've got to build up because we need more children to pay the rent. But as that went up and we need more children, the space didn't open up. There was obviously issues, issues that, you know, as you're taking care of children and doing the day-to-day, making sure that they're happy and healthy, we thought it was being handled hand-on the other side. So that's kind of where that disconnect was. It wasn't like we threw the gas pedal down and tried to rush everything in and weren't thinking about this. We were, it was something that was working really different after. And so we completely agree that, you know, the space is tight for what's in there. But the push was there because the rentals don't have to meet expectations.
The, it wasn't ever to really like take out walls fully, we were just trying to increase our sight lines really. And I, we talked about just opening doorways, which like I, I know that we, you know, we expected structural engineers, that we've had a lot of federal grants thrown at me, but then it's just, I can't apply because it's an owned building. And so that, that was kind of a, well, we got the brakes on, but still have to stop ahead. And that was where there was, there was disconnect on figuring out, moving forward. We're just, we are looking for a partnership by this moving forward. And we don't expect to have the town do any of the work or anything of that work to pay for everything outright, obviously. We want to go at it together if possible and figure out a way to continue making work because we do love it up there. We love the state, we love our parks, we love everything. So we're, we are looking forward to trying to make a plan to move forward together.
And if I may, we have talked about a lot of different grants because of the nature of grants. I've written grants. I know that to ask a small town to apply for a grant on behalf of this organization, like there's a lot of man hours involved in that. So there's money involved in that. And being a small town, I'm, I'm sure that all of you are, if not wearing multiple different hats, like keeping an eye on so much that just we, we struggled with what's a respectful way that's, you know, considerate of everything that the town of Swansea is doing for Swansea residents to ask for hours of work to be put into these grants to improve this building. It's a town-owned building, but the immediate benefit would be for the center. So that's, that's something that's been difficult for us too. And, you know, I think it would be helpful if we could have a deeper understanding of maybe what you would, what we're even doing considering that, you know, the town owns the building, we don't. Typically, if there's a grant that needs to be applied for, the town would have to apply for the grant. And I know that there were a few conversations that have happened about that that really weren't, they weren't for cool. But yeah, I think it would be helpful if we had a better understanding about how we go about that or if there's any insight on the town's side. Because in my experience, it's like, yeah, this is pretty unprecedented. It's really cool, but it's impressive.
So with regard to that last question, that has been something that's been put to us. What was put to us was an opportunity for you all to apply for grants as long as we had a twenty-year lease. And we were not in a position now or that previously to grant a twenty-year lease. From the standpoint of whether there's grants that we as a town could apply for, it would be in our best interest to look into that because it would allow for the refurbishment and continued operation of the building. And the gentleman who spoke at the beginning, Stefan, is the gentleman that we work with, Lori works with to coordinate the grants that we see. So if there are opportunities that we can move forward and there's opportunities for us to apply for grants that will help you and help us, we're wide open for that. The twenty-year lease, we're not going to do either. But from the perspective of us, Lori, it's the common, Lori, it's a, every day, we'll take that down.
Thank you very much.
We haven't done anything.
Good information though, I really just appreciate that, I'm really keen with you and, you know, talking Alex. We're newer board, trying to figure things out and, you know, take the best steps forward. So the insight, you know, the expertise you guys have and the history of the building is super helpful for us. Thank you very much.
Can you just come back to, you said the sight line. So now it changes things in my eyes that maybe doorways could be open in the lives just so we could protect the structure of the building where we could just open the doorways wide so your staff could have a bigger sight line, am I correct?
Yes, and that's something.
I just wanted to make sure that's true.
Yes, yes, and that was something that we discussed with licensing on making sure that we, that we meet their needs.
Did you ask them that?
Yes.
And they said yes?
Yeah.
And who is, who is that?
Licensing. My, my licenser is Amelia Lumberger.
How often do they come out and do inspections of that?
They come out at least once a year.
Once a year?
Yeah, at least once a year.
You have to pass, like a guy wouldn't help, right? Right?
And then every three years, we have to reapply for our licenses and.
Every three H P?
Every three years, we reapply, which means.
Doesn't never be applied yet?
No, we've had, so we've had them come out re-measured, but they haven't come out for the new application. They came out for the initial, then they, they come out within six, within six months. It's due to give your, it's due to do an unannounced visit and then.
When was the last visit you had from them?
Yeah, I want to say it was in eight.
And they just pop in?
Yeah, yeah.
It might be helpful for the board to know that you have been in this business longer than the time you've been.
Oh, yes, yes.
You could talk to them about Christian Hill, not Christian Hill, Dexter's property, where you are.
Oh, Ashley.
I shall wrote in Spring Street.
Yes, so I just, I started as a family childcare. Prior to that, I actually worked in the school districts, running their preschool, before, after school. They used to, they used to have, I ran that program, which was a licensed program, so it'd be a teacher. And then I decided to stay home with my oldest, who was also nine, almost ten. And I started on Spring Streets, I served at family childcare, had a license for thirteen children, I mean, which was a group, a group childcare, had to have an assistant to meet those needs, to meet that number. And then we brought a bigger house to pro the program and actually became, we were a family childcare and then through, we got re-licensed as a center-based program in my home for twenty children. And then right around, I want to say, March of twenty twenty-two, I received a letter that said, and I had already kind of been talking to the town about renting the building, things set up, because my insurance, my homeowner's insurance dropped us for, they were not requiring policies for family childcare. And that tends to be like a waxing, waning insurance field. So sometimes we can get policies easily for a family childcare, but sometimes it's not as easy. And they were going to triple my policy amount in my home. And so we sped things up and we went into the carver room. And that's where we started with the twenty kids over at my home and grew to where we're at. Then we became an nonprofit in the middle of that. So we were Honeybee Hall LLC and then we transitioned to a nonprofit with the help of the Leadership Learning Center.
Anything else? Okay, anything else from you while we're in public? We have one more segment in public, if that one will not. Thank you all. Next shot, last shot at public input. Julie, I mispronounced your name at the beginning, sorry. Come on up, tell us what you have to say.
I'm Julie, well, Julianne. We had my family move here about five years ago. And I had a proposal, kind of normal play, for an inclusive playground for Swansea. I have cable, if you would like it. So this is essentially the initiative, we have two copies. And it's an inclusive playground in a small town in Massachusetts that has, it's all-inclusive. For children with developmental needs, handicapped children, they have all kinds of things for different ages. This, this particular park is for ages two, thirteen and up. They have a squash pad, they have walk-in bathrooms, they have all kinds of things. I did reach out to the community, they are a little worried. I did reach out to the community on Facebook and I received.
Yes, you did.
Posits and negatives. I have looked into grants, there's a number of grants, and the NADAC region does a fifty-fifty, where they will do fifty percent of whatever grants you can get or match for playgrounds and parks, anything like that. A lot of people are, you know, we live in different times. This isn't, you know, you can't just send kids out nowadays, go play in the woods and this and that. And that's a lot of the feedback I was getting. We can't really do that nowadays. I have two small children, I have a five-year-old boy and I have a two-year-old girl. And there's not really any word to me. Even if we consider like Keene, a lot of people are like, go to Keene, go to this place, that place. Not everybody has a car. We do have a new park at the school, but that is currently under construction, which I completely understand. But during school hours, it's, you can't access it until six o'clock at night. I have small children, they're in bed by seven. I don't know about everybody else's children, so there's, look at this.
So I promote.
And my, I live with my parents and they help me with my children. I just retired from the Army National Guard of Massachusetts in September. So I'm going back to work and I'm going to school full-time. So they help me quite a bit and someplace, I mean, somewhere to take children that aren't of school age would be so beneficial to us. We have new developments that have been put up in our town. What are people supposed to do with these, their children, you know? And some people said Swansea Lake, which Swansea Lake is beautiful. That hill is a little dangerous, especially for the older population or, you know, people in wheelchairs and things like that. And I think it would be beneficial economically because you would have people coming in from out of town. But now they're buying gas in our town, they're buying lunch in our town, they're buying drinks in our town, which is smart. I know a lot of people worry about the taxes, which I completely understand. But this is beneficial to not only children, but all age groups. Being outside, fresh air, social interactions, emotional interactions are so important for our youth. And the children are our future. And we've had new families, just on my street, I live on Sommo Drive, I just had one family move in on Sommo Drive and one family moved into house over with little children. Our population is changing, our town is changing, and we need to change with it. And I think that it would be beneficial all the way around. And for Swansea, we have, I have the exact numbers on that paper, so I'll just guess them. Roughly seven thousand residents in Swansea. As of the twenty-twenty census, seventeen thousand were, seventeen hundred, I'm sorry, were under the age of eighteen. And in Swansea, there are one in two hundred and thirty-two grandparents that provide for, either full childcare for their children, their grandchildren, or have custody of those children. And they need somewhere where they can meet other parents. I've been here for five years, I barely know anybody. That would be so beneficial. And we could have, you know, all kinds of things, which could be discussed, but the town would have to be for it. And I think it would be a great endeavor to go into.
Good job, Julie.
Sorry, I was a little nervous.
So the reason we interacted, obviously, was your enthusiasm on Facebook. And I wanted to see you have the opportunity to pursue it, it's a great concept. We're very supportive of our recreation department and our Realt trail committee and trying to expand recreation opportunities for people. I did put you in touch with Ashley Crosby, who was our recreation director. She indicated she'd be able to reach out to you next week. This is the first week of summer camp, so she's available. You had the opportunity to hear Stefan, me and you at the beginning of our meeting when he talked about a plan for the brownfield. And the reason I wanted you to come in today for public input is it's an opportunity to, for you to meet people who are actively engaged and to volunteer and also buy their employment in making Swansea the type of place that you want it to be. But at public input, we can't really interact. It's an opportunity for you to do what you did and give us an idea. And if you're able to follow up with Ashley when she reaches out to you and catch up with Stefan on the way out and then connect with Lori, who's a town administrator at Town Hall, you can give her a call. Collectively, they can help you and you'll find others. Michael York was sitting behind you, Mark Salero from left, both of those are people that have worked consistently to try to make Swansea a better place. They had helped you formally a plan that you could potentially bring to the voters. I'll share a little snippet, when I was maybe closer to your age, I don't know how old you are, closer to your age, when I first moved to Swansea, my first town meeting was in the late eighties, I was over at the auditorium at the high school. And I lived in the Midwest and I'd grown up in the Berkshires and I had lived in the Boston area for a year before I came here to raise my children. So I went to the town meeting and the first item on the agenda was the budget. I don't remember what it was, it was like a million and a half dollars, a long time ago. And all the department heads got up and people said, yay, Al, and then yay, this and all that. And there was no discussion on the budget. The budget went through, once they all, once they all gave their presentation, the budget went through, it was like five minutes, ten minutes, duh. I was just thinking a million and a half dollars and there's no opposition to it, it just sailed right through. So we went down through, I don't know, five or six or seven or eight, whatever, other items. And then we came to a request for the town to spend three thousand dollars on a playground at the Lane Fields on South Road. That was an hour debate. It got to the point where I felt like saying, I'll write you a check, just let's move on. And it was lit, it did pass, but it was close. It was, it was a lot of opposition and why we spent this three thousand dollars. And so two days later, through whatever, I went down to the postmaster Ted, who used to have a post office in East Swansea. And I used to go down to see him every couple of weeks, whatever. And during conversation with him, I said, Ted, I just went to my first town meeting, I can't believe what happened. There was no discussion on the budget, it was a million and a half dollars, but then we spent an hour on three thousand dollars. And he just looked at me and he said, Bill, you're not from here. And he just looked at me and he said, Bill, you're not from here, you're from away. A million and a half dollars is a lot of money to you, three thousand is nothing. But here, now again, this was forty years ago, here, people can't conceive of a million and a half dollars, but three thousand dollars, that's real money. And and that was the the gist of of my beginnings here, and and it's the passion that the town has, there was, there was pro and con, but there was a lot of interest in it. Now, if you look at those Lane Fields, with what Swansea Cal Ripken has done over the last ten or fifteen years through the collaboration of the Rec Department and the town, they're phenomenal, they're they're the best fields in the county. Uh, maybe maybe Walpole or the Huckards do a little bit better, but otherwise, they're the best fields in the county. And and so there's a lot of, there's a groundswell of support that people will give to you, it's just, it's gotta come together in a way that will be beneficial to what you're trying to express and a plan that the town can can get get behind and can marshal and support. Hopefully you'll be more successful than we were with the fire station, it took us ten years, we finally did.
We did the fire station, actually, yes, we did get there.
Uh, but you have a very compelling argument and and one that I I hope you'll you'll pursue and and meet with Ashley and Stephon and Lori, and then come back with with something a little more concrete, get on our agenda. Basically, you're looking at potentially a memorial article for March, and those come into play in November and December and finalize in the January, but they can help you with that.
Thank you so much.
It was a blessing to have you come to, thank you, appreciate your enthusiasm. Julie, you're on your service.
Um, I do want to give you a little, I have copies of everything.
Good.
Yes. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in public? George?
Yeah, I'm, hey, good to see you guys. Yeah, a couple of things, and I didn't expect, I didn't even know it was Wednesday, we drove by and I'm like, so a couple of things, um, first of all, how did the cooling station work? What kind of numbers showed up?
Uh, we didn't have any participants, other than staff, our town administrator.
Copy that. And what precipitated that, other than the obvious heat?
Uh, there was a message from our police chief to the town administrator on Saturday, just making sure we were aware of it and putting plans in place to help people, should we be in heat.
Copy that, and what what about, what about the part about the personnel? Why was that in that message? For a lack of personnel or?
It was probably, we we weren't able to staff it, we were able to to put a plan together, but we weren't able to.
But what's the staffing aspect of it?
We had, we had it here at Wiltshire, but everybody else is down there, so we didn't, it it can't have people coming in and out of the building when nobody here.
So what you're saying, that it would normally be at the town hall?
Uh, well, that's what we ended up doing, we we moved it to town hall, so it could be an option.
Okay, 'cause there's a cost there and, but I wasn't sure if it was a a staffing issue with our EMS, or or I wasn't sure what that staffing meant, um, and and, you know, and that brings up the concern I have with our town hall, I I'm not at all, you know, we're, we live in a society where we're afraid of everything, you know, everything is incumbent on fear, 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 fear. You know, in our beautiful little town hall where you could walk in, look at the maps, talk to people, now we're, now we're in a security level, you know, locked front door, uh, now we, now we're supposed to have, just like the school, there's gonna be an attendant there, what can we do for you? And I I'm assuming that's gonna be an added cost to have somebody sit there with the possibility of somebody coming in?
It is not an added cost.
Okay, so who's gonna police that area that says?
It's it's an existing staff person.
Okay.
Uh, the position is currently vacant, we have a departure, but we have a new individual coming in as of the middle of July.
So what we're moving towards is, no, by appointment? What is your official business here in our small town of Swansea?
With the exception of the tax collective in the town hall.
Okay, and what precipitated that? Is there a threat level? Is there a known threat? Because I spoke to this young lady, uh, very nice, I appreciate you taking it, uh, short notice, but it seemed like it was, we have to protect our personnel. Yeah, Jimmy, I'm, thank you.
I'm probably one of the ones that moved forward becoming a selectman, to be honest.
Oh, wait, I I I, I'm sorry, can I, can I, sir, I have an ear issue, yeah, I'm sorry, I have a rough ear.
I might be one of the ones that got the ball rolling on this, to be honest, becoming a selectman, you know, Bill, I agree with you. Um, I just witnessed it in the town hall, and I witnessed that it was open house and today they made, the world has changed, George, what a day, and the staff needed to feel comfortable, and there was people working, and people could come in if you sit down, these people are being paid to work for the town, and people come in and take an hour of their time, talking about their job or something, and we're trying to be polite, and and these people have got to be comfortable for their job, there was a lot of issues, it's just not about safety.
Okay, well, thank you, now that makes total sense.
A lot of issues involved, I'm glad, and George, I agree, you know, you wanna have that small-town feel, but we still can have it, we're gonna have a very friendly person right at our window, how can we help you today? We have Lori that's gonna come right out of the front door, how can we help you? And it just makes the people that work for our town feel a little more secure. You know, there was some incidents, the the girl could be sitting in her little office and somebody come in, it's a large man, and he comes in, he stands, he closes the door behind him, and the young girl gets a little nervous, and the guy can be a little aggressive, right? Who is there? You know, but women in there too, so we have to get some kind of control today.
Well, thank you, Jimmy, thank you for that, no, that makes total sense, I mean, job production, I didn't know, and I, and I also pondered the idea is that because of this guy that runs around into public buildings, kind of harassing people with a video, I wasn't sure if that was it, and I don't subscribe to that.
Yeah.
I I think that's harassment, and I didn't know if that was a demarcation area to prevent that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we think so, and that's a people getting, you know, against it a little because of, you know, it it does take away, I agree, it it is a little like, but today.
It's always been a very inviting, you know, it's always been a very small-town, very positive experience.
We're gonna balance it out, so we still have that good feeling about our town hall, but we do have safety, we know, we talked about a lot of this.
I, so I support it a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Very good clarification, I, we, 'cause I had other issues, I was, wasn't knowing if there was a genuine threat level, I didn't know if it came from a state agency, I didn't know, so I want your clarification, I appreciate that. So the other thing is, I never got any follow-up with, uh, our discussion, uh, and I think you remember that, uh, and I don't wanna bring it up in public, uh, but we had a private conversation, now I was looking for some sort of correspondence via email, that, and and I wasn't looking for a disposition, I was just looking for a follow-up, uh, of any sort, uh, because I'm leaving it in your hands to move forward with the way you wanna move forward with it. Uh, but I was just looking forward to a a follow-up, just to feel like, you you were very, that my tax dollars are at work, and whether you like me or dislike me, you like my politics, dislike my politics, I'm s- I'm not a less than, um, you know, a lesser person, I'd like a follow-up. And likewise with that that light, uh, that I spoke of months ago, uh, I had no disposition on that track, on that that light. And, you know, I have videotaped, you know, the state putting that beautiful, uh, hole off, uh, by my house, and before they put that in there, everyone would park on Cream Hill. And I have videotaped of a man stopping out there yesterday, uh, he was parking there for a few minutes in shorts, goes down into the same old team, goes down into into the woods, he's down there for a little bit, comes back, goes into the back of his vehicle, my dogs are alerting to it, it's right outside my house, you know, my diligence, if I buy another house, it's, I'm gonna, you know, not be right next to a a major road. Uh, and then shortly after he leaves, a motorcycle pulls up and that guy walks out into the woods and gets on a fight, a lead. We have some law enforcement here, it seems nefarious, uh, you know, and and it's a li- little onset, but if there was a traffic light, I love a light there. Uh, I'm by myself now, but when I had my wife and children, we had a lot of that kind of activity. I don't know why, I don't care why, I have good neighbors, but there's a lot of that kind of craziness, and it would be all hours of the night. So if towns were paid for a traffic, uh, or a streetlight, I would love to have one there just as a, you know, as a, but not down there. Like I said, if that light was moved up at the intersection, I'd perfectly find it as a taxpayer to pay for whatever, whatever that cost was. But I have not heard any follow-up on that, from Joe, from anybody. Uh, don't waste my time. If 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 this is just, just saying, George, we're not listening to you, and I'll go by my own, but, you know, if this really makes me wonder why I'm out of staying in Swansea. Uh, you know, I I had a medical emergency and it took forty-five minutes to get help, and help came from Keene, uh, not one police officer came, not one fire person came. I I'm a little bothered by it, what are you doing with my tax dollars? And instead of fighting and trying to make a change, 'cause I'm sixty years old and I'm tired of fighting, I'm just gonna move, and then you guys can get somebody, I I'm from Connecticut, I'm from a small, funky, but demographically identical to Swansea, two hundred acres, and I watched our little small town, you can't even go there anymore. It's all outsiders that want things the way they want it, the way it was for them, but they moved here, and that's why I see a direction of our town going. And I moved here intentionally because it was such a plain, small community. And Jimmy, we we were neighbors in a beautiful little community.
And it came a long way since.
It does, and it's a lot of different, so a lot of it to you, well, you're gonna be my star, you're extra, you did well up here. Um, but but, you know, um, so that's it, I wasn't gonna plan out, but, you know, these are things that I'm I'm ruminating, I think, and and I'm just like, I'm just saying, I'm my investing area, and I don't wanna be that.
It's a third, we, most of what you mentioned, we can't really.
Copy that, no, I just wanted to put it out there.
And we we are contracted with the Cheshire EMS, I don't know what your situation was, but.
Cheshire EMS wasn't involved at that time, we, I was relying on, in fact, that was Delusio, okay?
It was not recent.
No, it was, uh, you might, you were proud, you were working.
We're we're in three years, I mean, third year.
But I mean, our staffing is so bad, and I mean.
I know, but you're, we can't tell you about that, that's all, but we do have Cheshire EMS now that we're coming up for new contractor, contractor.
And where's their staffing at? Are they still at thirty percent?
Cheshire, Cheshire EMS is currently there at a hundred percent of their staffing, I know, they're not paying the role of that.
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
Their staffing, I know, is.
So we're fully on board, excellent.
Well, the one thing we can, uh, address is the the, uh, streetlight, not not that we can do anything, but I I appreciate a little more detail on that.
Well, I gave, I gave it all, I gave you the poll number, uh, and it was brought up, it was brought up, that streetlight was brought up, or you did an audit, you said. Uh, and so it was either overlooked, and I did some research, and so there had to be a permanent poll, and I don't think it's even, if that person was paying, I don't think it's possible for him to pay for a resounding personal light, because that's a utility poll, and there has to be a permanent for that light. Uh, there's gonna be a paper trail there, and I don't care if it's five dollars, put it down on your service of public, not out on a guy's driveway.
So where where is the light then? Where would we want it?
What's the?
Old Brook and, um, Swansea Road, Key and, I'm sorry, I'm.
That would seem to maybe be a good location for a light.
No, it's outside.
It's it's right outside his driveway.
Okay.
And I would prefer it, we had an intersection serving the public, um, and and, and like I said, as a simple Georgia, you look into it, the town doesn't have a problem with it.
But we haven't.
Copy that, thank you so much.
We haven't, but we will.
Copy, but it's been, it's been a while. Uh, so, yeah, that's it, and, and, you know.
But George, I I I do have to reply to this, I can't sit here and hear you say negative things about our police department, fire department, because since I've been aboard, our fire department is growing every day, we're building a new face, and we're spending tons of time with helping them strengthen there, they're volunteers, time has changed, George, so bad, you can't get volunteers like back in the old days now. These towns are struggling, everywhere is struggling for help. These fire guys that we got here, they just, I I couldn't even tell you how many calls they got. Uh, maybe Mick can help me with, just recently, give us a number, phone number, I'll tell you how many calls you just done.
So within the last thirteen days, you've got fifty calls, that's not including.
Cat, naturally, and and this is.
Yeah, but this is also traditionally the busiest time, July, July and January is also the busiest.
So, no, no.
Traditionally.
So we we had it all pretty, pretty well loaded, but that's the thirteen days of those calls, that that's a lot of calls, so.
Yeah, no, I I didn't say anything discouraging, I I really, I I did not say anything, but when you're, when you're having a medical emergency, or you're having, you're thinking, you have a wife dying in your bedroom, and you think you're dying and you can't call anyone because you don't wanna leave your wife, and you think you're dying, you know, I'm an EMT, I I thought I was having a triple, a loop, a triple A, and and but, no, 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 so if it's you waiting for the police to come, or you waiting for that medical attention, that doesn't matter, and it's a fiscal issue. It it's a fiscal, fiscal, fis- fiscal issue, and it's a, it's, it's, I still question why we are going with all the certs, and I looked it up, and I think it's one forty-seven something, the RSA that governs our fire, I wasn't expecting to get into this, but the way I, and my reading comprehension sucks, I cut trees for a living, and that's a reason, 'cause I I'm not a super smart guy. But the way I read it is that if you're a volunteer or part-time, you don't have to have all the requirements, and I spoke to chief about it, and chief agreed, he said, that's right, but I won't. And I said, chief, that's fine, if I have under, people under me, and that's my call, I support that, but tell the community that, don't put it out there that by law we have to have all that certification.
I I don't believe that Rudy never said, Rudy never said that by law we had to have this, to this level of certification.
Well, I'll tell you right now, I would be a volunteer fireman, and I I, thirty years ago, I was a certified EMT, and I just went through my EMT, and I passed my practical and I didn't, I passed my, uh, practical, but I didn't wanna kick my rate, my own personal reasons.
Sure.
But you wouldn't hire me, you wouldn't hire me, and I'm fine with that. But I'm sure there's a lot of people out there that would be willing to. I know that, I know a man that is, that is certified cop, probably has his first respondents, and I know he's an EMT. No, he's a certified fireman, and he was denied, hired, because he didn't have both, he didn't have his EMT and his fire. So I know.
That's false, I'll tell you right now, that's false.
Okay.
So, because I.
So Dave Alice lied?
Dave, you're saying with Swansea, you can put use of.
George, and thi- this is just public input.
Yeah, right, I'm sorry, we should have this in private, we could have a good call over.
We'll look.
Well, let me go back to Jimmy, 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 I've never said anything discouraging about it.
Okay.
Okay, I I'm not kidding, but my point, my point is, Jimmy, when, and we, and you brought this up in your conversation, bitching over three thousand dollars and just passing a million dollars without construction, we are spending four, forty million dollars, plus forty million dollars a year on broken systems without any pushback, and we're fighting over it, trying to keep our heads above water, it is a fighting, it's above the school, and I don't know how to fix it.
There was pushback.
But and it's, but but very little, but that is our problem in America.
It's actually.
It's it's, what could we do, we need a fraction of that, we could pay good police to come here, but it's not the police, it's the cost of living, it's the cost of living, how does a young person relocate to this community and survive with a family, with a policing, I don't know, police are paid, or a fireman?
If we separated the tax bill to the school tax bill and gave you a school tax bill, and we gave you a town budget, I think you'd be very surprised in what we run this town budget.
Oh, I'm impressed.
Five dollars and what you get.
Oh, I'm impressed.
Sure, we very supportive.
Oh, no, I'm impressed, and that was a misunderstanding.
No, I.
By the chill of the community tries to push back on that budget, this is almost a waste of time, and it's hurting good feelings and hurting good neighbors, because this, this is, I'm sorry, I'm I'm done, well, thank you for.
Shut up, okay, shut up. I'm George's son, and you can obviously tell me this.
One second, can I have George's last?
Same as this.
Yeah, it's awesome, it's always, I mean, so I'd like to say, um, George as well, um, so I graduated twenty twenty-one from the Nannock Regional High School, I had just graduated. Um, so I graduated in twenty twenty-one from Ananack Regional High School, I just graduated from NHG, I'm up in Concord, um, for our, thank you, uh, so, so it is. I'd like to say, uh, because I'm not familiar with this, this is my first ever town meeting before. But, um.
We're not quite a town meeting.
There's, uh, you're close, yeah, thank you, um, what is the school bill? I'm just curious, uh, forty-something million up there?
I think it's thirty-eight, thirty-nine, yeah.
I just liked the list.
There was, there was a strong effort to reduce the budget by ten percent.
Yeah.
And that was, that was, uh, that prevailed with deliberative session.
Yeah.
And then the default budget is the one that the voters approved, and had tipped it up in March, which was thirty-eight and change.
And I have, I don't have enough information to make my own perceived, um, notion, except I just wanna give this feedback for whoever wants to listen. I graduated in twenty twenty-one, I will say, I did not, I was not prepared for college whatsoever. And I am not the only one who said this before, I have dozens of people that I graduated from. And I was also, I wanna say, top ten in my class. I don't know what the prox- uh, approximate number was, but I had a four point three two two K, I was five way to scale. Did not prepare me whatsoever for college. I took a gap year, I graduated in twenty twenty-one, I started college in twenty twenty-two, took me three years. Because I failed, um, multiple classes in basic, basic math, and keep in mind, I only took up the pre-calculus and, and math. But I will say, I don't know how it is now, but at least three years ago, or four years now, ago now, when I graduated, or back then, when I graduated, it did not prepare me whatsoever, and I had teachers, I had one specific teacher, well, not few, but one math teacher who was pre-calculus, who would play a guitar in the class while he put on math videos to teach. Now, I don't know how the teachers are now, but I can unders- not understand, but I'm disappointed that I was like that. But he told me, he's like, I'm not getting paid nearly enough, but when, you know what he told me though? He was like, it's because it's going higher ups, admission, and that was directly from a teacher. And I understand how the bill, like.
I'm, I'm sorry, we're, we're here for a different purpose.
Yeah.
What I will encourage you to do, so, February seventh, on the calendar.
Yeah.
We have the school at ten o'clock, actually quarter up, so you can register as a voter to, to vote. Uh, that's a deliberative session, and you, you'll have an opportunity in three minutes to, to speak to this, and I think it would be very effective. I bet if you took advantage of that, it'll be, depending on the weather, a hundred people, two hundred people, but it'll give you an opportunity to tell your story. In our case.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's really not, there's nothing we can do.
No, I, I.
As a, as a resident like yourself.
But Bill, why, this is, this is, this is our town, you guys are our town, why is the system set up? Because if you're invested, and you have children at that school, but this is our work, and I understand it, you guys are powerless over this. Am I wrong? The town is powerless over forty million dollars a year. How do we bring about change? And are you guys on board with bringing about change? Are you on board with having meetings over coffee and saying, this is how we combat this, let us educate you on how to bring about change at the school, so we can provide a beautiful? I was a dad, four kids, I just hear this one, I don't like the message because my kids are all grown up, but you, you gotta praise them, I was there. But wouldn't it be nice in the small community if we could put in a little water park over in Brown? And let the, her and your kids go down here and cool off in the summer? What a beautiful place that would be in town. But we can't because we're nickeling dining, and this boy just graduated, and he, you know, he's, but he's telling you from the horse's mouth, it's a joke, but can you guys educate us to, so we can be effective taxpayers and, and evolve? And get the knowledge, so we can help you guys get the money to make our quality of life better?
I, I don't know the schedule, but, uh, both the school board and the budget committees, they're, they're in session, the school board all year long. That's, that's a forum, just like this one.
Yeah.
Uh, to speak with the school board.
It's consistent, though, I've been doing it, I've been doing it, and I did it for all four of my children, kids. And you, and you just, we're powerless, we need help. We need, and I know you're part, and you could teach us how to bring about change, not in this setting, but, hey, we're going to war with this budget. Let anyone that's interested come down, and we'll teach you how to.
Just don't point at me, George, I'm the moderator for the district, so don't point, right, just point at these guys.
It started at the state level, there's a lot going on with the state that gets pushed down on.
Well, then maybe you're perfect, maybe, because, you know, I joined the conservative committee, and listen, I don't care what part of the aisle you're on, this is a big issue for all of us, it's a quality of life. It, it's a quality of life, we should not worry about our political views and get together and have conversation. And find, find a, a medium ground where everyone can be at peace and move forward as a community. But I, I feel like our community's fractured, this, I've been, I've been here since two thousand thirteen. And, and I'm listening to this young lady speak, serving her country, raising her children, doing everything right. And, and I don't want, I, I don't wanna see more money, I'd rather go to police, but I think, I, because I was there, I raised four children. And I do believe in we need that, but until we fix that black hole, you guys can have the best intentions in the world. And when you speak out against, you hate education, I love education, here's a product of a young man that fought with learning disabilities, never to think about it, he just works his butt off. Uh, and he's a product of this community. And, but we need, we do need to get together and try to fix it so some money's left over for our community. Because every, like, seeing that road being built, I'm like, Jesus Christ, more money. And it's a crappy road, but you, you, you know, as a taxpayer, like, you know what I'm saying? You don't wanna be like that, but looking for help, I, I'd like to be a positive and not a negative, I'm disgruntled, I told you why I'm disgruntled. I'd like to be a positive, but it's, it's hard.
Well, let us start on the things that we can work on with regard to the, the issues you brought up.
But the eight million dollars is not, I don't know how you guys do what you do with that budget, I really don't. And, and thank you for everything that our community does do, but it's not enough.
All those employees.
Well, dedicated people, no doubt about it.
Administrator, it's, it's people like that that are going to work. But we have to move on, I, I appreciate you coming, and welcome anytime.
So if somebody could just send me an email just with those cou- couple things, I didn't mean to get off on the tangent, but thank you, I won't, I feel, I won't have to go to counseling this week, but thank you.
That's all.
I don't go to counseling, you're my counselor, I come down here for counseling.
Well, we appreciate that, we'll put the tip jar out.
But if somebody could just follow up on that with, uh, and I, like, I care, I don't care, I leave it up to you and your wisdom, but.
Just wanna make sure we're following up with regards to the streetlight and what else?
And the, the young lady knows, I had a conversation with her, and I don't wanna make that public.
She may or she may not, but.
Uh, she acknowledged me. Oh, you, oh, you totally forgot the situation.
Well, she, she.
That was probably my second week here, and there's a lot going on, so I apologize for not being able to, but, you know, you know, I'm just being here and all.
It was a personnel issue that I, that I had, I'll, I'll, thank you. Thank you for everyone's indulgence.
And anybody else in the public, and what?
Are you sure you wanna have that?
Mike, Julie, I'll, I appreciate you being here, and you have.
So I, I don't know whether it needs to be public enough, and we have, uh, a couple of applications, and then we wanted to make sure that, I talked to Jimmy today. Uh, he, he told me to come to, just to speak to, just to the applications you wanna prove.
Okay.
Yeah, we, it was just to give you an update on these two applications and why we were pushing them forward, so you had more knowledge of what's going on with us. So if you wanna do that, we'll get them from them.
That's public.
Okay, so we do have.
I have names.
Right, so, my name is, um, Vincent Sanchez, I'm the assistant fire team. Uh, we have, just to kind of give you a quick update, we're, we're trying to add to our staffing, and you see all the signs around town, and this is actually working for us. We're averaging, we're receiving probably four or five applications a week, we interview the, 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 yeah, we interview the applicants, and then, once we do that, we come to a consensus between the staff, and it goes to HR. And they, you know, we recommend those recommendations to, to the board for PAR. Uh, we're trying to streamline this, so it used to take us six or eight weeks to get somebody, once, with background checks and all this stuff. We're trying to get down to two weeks. So when the applications come in, we interview the personnel, we move it on to, uh, to HR. Once we get through HR, and we decide that that's, this person's a viable candidate, it comes to you, and they become a member of the department for a year on probation, and then after, after probation, we review it again, whether they come off probation, or, or stay out for a while, and then they become a full member of the department. This week, there are two applicants that, in our opinion, are slam dunks, they're both local people. They've, they've been here most of their lives, they intend to stay here. Uh, one of them comes right out, fresh out of, uh, his fire one certifications, already enrolled into an EMT class. Second one has, um, experience with the keen call company, is looking forward to getting, is enrolled in, uh, participating in an EMT class now, and wants to get their fire one as soon as possible. So these are two people, young people, that we're looking to bring in from, to bolster our waters from the bottom up. Uh, so I just, I sent recommendations along with the applications. Uh, and I just wanted to, to tell you, just to give you that, that's a quick update. So we have these two applicants, we have these two applicants that are pushing through right now, we have two more that are very viable candidates that came in and got applications last week, and I have two more that are inquiring. Uh, that are all certified people, they're all younger, and they're from the community. So we're, our numbers are growing, they're, they're growing, and they're going with, with good people, you know, very, uh, so we're, we're doing a lot with the personnel and the staff.
But does the fire, and before it's helping you recruit?
I, I think it is, you know, and we've always said that, we said that with the new station, people gotta look at that, that new station, and they're gonna wanna become a part of that. So it's, um, one of, one of these two, um, is a new young firefighter, he's gonna go through that station. Uh, and that was, to him, when I told him that that station, he was going to go to, and he's, yeah, he's an eighteen-year-old kid, who wouldn't wanna go to a nice shiny new building, right? So, uh, yeah, I, I think it is helping, but the, the signs that surround town, we have had so many people come in, and said, I saw your signs. You know, what can I do to help? Uh, some of it is, some of it is viable help, and you, you know the people in the community wanna help. Um, and, and some of it, we just have to say, thank you, but there's not a, there's not a spot, not a niche right now. But we'll be thanking for their, you know, for their interest.
When do you think you'll have the first two on board to bring to the board?
These two? Uh, the, their applications are here right now, decided.
Okay, and, and when will they be available to meet us? Will they be available to July ninth, maybe they have any ceremony with the police that they.
Yes, sir, we'll make it so, yeah.
Perfect.
Yep, I, yeah, one of them's on vacation, we're gonna be back the fifth.
Okay.
So, um, I'll make, I'll make those arrangements for the night.
Great, good news.
It is, yeah, it's good.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, anybody watching on public guest, we're going in there.
Thank you, guys.
This is a graduation.
Thank you, guys.
See?
Do you have a quick second? And we did sign that, so.